Okay, we're gonna get started, so people, please, get your seats. Okay, we don't have anyone here, but we're gonna start anyway. We don't want to make people wait. So, welcome to the open forum. Just to remind you about the goal of the open forum is just to have yet another channel for the community to talk to us directly. We know we have other channels, we have advisory councils, we have a mailing list where people can contact us, but this is a very good forum so that we are face-to-face or virtually, and we can ask questions on the fly. In addition to being an open session and public, it's being webcast, it's gonna be recorded, so you will be able to join and follow this even afterwards. So, we will actually post a link on the agenda as usual. Let me go over the ground rules. As usual, we're gonna get comments from the floor here and remotely. So, I will be running floor control, I will have a queue combined with remote participants and people here in the room. People here in the room should be able to queue at a mic. Do we have a mic? Or, okay, yeah, we have a mic, actually. So, if you are here in the room, please, ask for the mic, and you will be able to do that. Excellent, perfect. No, so the question is if I will actually give priority to remote people over local people? No, not at all. I mean, just request the floor, and we will basically give it to you. This time, we have something different from preview sessions, which is like, we actually had a couple of predefined topics, just to trigger discussions and see a bit what things that we think they are important, we can talk about. And obviously, they relate to our strategic targets or goals. So, I think that's very good. And this time, actually, Desiree will be running the session, so I'm moderating. So, I think, Desiree, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Gonzalo, and welcome, everyone. Since you laid out already all the housekeeping rules, I think we will just follow the agenda and try to get as many questions from people online and in the room connected to our strategic objective 2B, which is enabling safer and trusted internet. So, it would be good to keep your, I will be taking tab of all the questions and then inviting all the trustees to comment on them, and then also taking more questions from the room before we move to the second topic in our agenda. We have about 15 minutes for each of the topic. And so, the first one, let us first see how many people are in the room online.
We have about 17 viewers.
Okay, great. Then, let's start and open up the floor to questions, as you know, that one of the strategic objectives is to increase trust on the internet among users and among all the other stakeholders, and to try to strengthen the internet society to become more effective voice in the world around this topic. So, we are really looking for your questions and your input as to what might be missing that we are not doing. The action plan we approved is online, and I hope you're familiar with it. So, how do we go about enabling people to trust privacy and security of their communication? And what are the thoughts you may have? So, we can also have some reports on the initiatives that ISOC has done in the four, six months or lately, either from the trustees or maybe from some staff in the room, if we don't have any questions coming up. So, with that, the second topic will be, again, a presentation from a staff member giving an update how ISOC engages with its membership and the community, and we'll take the questions after the presentation. In the first case, we have no presentation, so we'll just go straight into that. And may I ask Kevin to read out any questions if they come up first in the chatroom?
Before we go into that, I think we got a previous question on this precise topic, right? So, we can queue it up. I mean, it's up to you how to queue it up, if you want to start with that.
Right, yes. So, the first question that we have received, I will read out, and that is, "The internet is facing new threats from very large-scale distributed denials of service attacks from the Internet of Things devices." The question is, I believe, comes from Bob Hindon, the previous chair, and he says, "I like to call it the Internet of Insecure Things. What is ISOC going to do to deal with this global threat to the internet? I think it's time for more than just a discussion, we need more real leadership." So, let's start with that first question. Would any of the trustees like to comment on this question?
I'm happy to take that up. I think there's a couple of things that are important to keep in mind here. I think one of them is that the Internet of Things is still the internet. It's using the same technologies, it's the same general platforms that we know and love, and we've lived with for decades now. It's just that people are building them and integrating them in different ways, and it's different processes coming around here that are being used to build these things. There's an interesting ecosystem effect here in that a lot of companies now are internet companies that never thought they would be internet companies. I used to be a car company, I used to be an appliance company, and now you're a software vendor. You're a vendor of internet technology, and it's a hard transition for people to make. It's a whole new discipline of engineering. So, I think we need to help a lot of these different companies make that transition. Now, it's a good question for how ISOC contributes to that effort. I think it's a whole industry challenge. A lot of us in our individual day jobs outside society as well are gonna have to be involved in that effort. To the extent, as I started off, that the IoT is the internet, I think all of the trust efforts that ISOC has engaged in, and all the advocacy efforts in that vein, definitely apply directly over to the IoT. I think the other major effort that's going on, it's kind of affiliated to ISOC, is in the IETF. One of the things that came out after the recent EDOS stuff is that a lot of the hacking that was going on was actually pretty low-grade stuff. These IoT exploits were, again, things you would have seen in the 1990s in commodity, in, you know, normal internet, non-Io, non-things sorts of platforms. And so, I think we have the knowledge in the technical community, the internet technical community, we just need to condense that down. And there's already some work started in the IETF to gather, go around and shake the engineer trees and get the knowledge that we've got, and get it consolidated into some documents, so that we can then take it out into the broader community, all those people who are just now becoming internet technology developers, and help them ramp up that learning curve a lot faster, so they don't have to go through old travails that we did back in the 90s.
Thank you. Yes, please, Olive, yes.
Look at that. So, yeah, sort of plus-one to what Richard just said, there is, the internet is just the internet. And a number, we've been talking about the Internet of Things in the context of collaborative security quite often, and mainly as a pointer to that that is an area where the people who deploy and produce and maintain these devices need to have an outward perspective, need to be aware of that what they do will impact the internet. And if they do this in a wrong way, the trust of the internet and hence their business opportunities will be affected. In our Internet of Things white paper that we published last year, I believe, or earlier this year, I don't know when we published it, but anyway, we already set out, I would say, an agenda around this, and in our speaking engagement, we have been using this agenda. This is not our agenda, I think it's the agenda of the world. There are a number of things in addition to understanding the best current practices that there are, that need to be done. First, of course, the produce and follow these best current practices, these things that the industry needs to know. Technical community, IETF has a role there, but I also think that trade organizations like the Online Trust Alliance have a role there, which they actually take. I think there is a role for responsible disclosure. With more of these devices, we have to make sure that people who tinker with these devices have the ability to have a path to the companies back to report these things. Field-upgradeability, big problem. The IoT, the Internet of Things patch workshop of the IAB addressed this, the NTIA multi-stakeholder process that kicked off a few weeks ago addresses this. So, this is also an agenda item that I think is important. Device lifetime sustainability. How do we upgrade phones that are two years old?
If you can be concise.
I'm going to put the last one, data collection in an honoring way, not necessarily security-related, but trust-related, and of course, penalizing the irresponsible behavior. Those are things that I think are on the agenda, that we as ISOC will hammer on, where I think that chapters can have local discussions around these issues. So, this is on the radar and fits into our frameworks.
Thank you, Olive. We do have a follow-up question from Jolly McAfee in the chatroom. He actually has a comment, which I'll read out, and it's a question as well. He said that Vinsav has suggested that the IGF Dynamic Coalition on Core Internet Values take this up, specifically authentication principles and protocols, although one might think that the IETF would be the more appropriate venue. Is such an approach feasible? Does Internet of Things get us into the same weeds as the digital object architecture?
Is this a rhetorical question?
He said it's a comment, but we have a volunteer.
Sean, and then Giham.
I'll keep this quick. For IoT authentication mechanism, I know the IETF actually has a working group that is specifically looking at that, and has been looking at it for a while. So, I guess they can gather input, but I think there's some people working on that. Whether it gets deployed properly and implemented correctly, I don't know, but I mean, they're actually definitely working on standards there already.
Thank you, Sean. Giham.
I'd like to address two things. So, one is the insecurity of IoT. The other issue is privacy, which is, oh, the lack of privacy, which is built into many of these systems. So, I think that's another area we should address. Also, I believe, this is an area where ISOC cannot only do things, but we seem to be done things, seem to be doing things. So, because everyone now has problems with lack of security of IoT, and it's going to just get worse. I mean, someone from someone's house is going to be broken into, someone from someone's car is going to be taken over, or something like that. It's going to happen sooner or later. And I think this is an area where ISOC can show that it is doing something. I mean, doing something is good, no doubt about that, but showing that they're doing something is also important.
Thank you very much, Giham. We have a follow-up question here on the floor, so.
I'm Siva Subramaniam from Internet Society India, CHN8 chapter. The policy inputs that arises from ISOC and ISOC Board of Trustees, I'm from a chapter, and I don't seem to get enough time, advance notice to respond, give inputs and provide inputs, so that the process becomes bottom-up. I also see a continued disconnect between ISOC and chapters. So, though there are some efforts beginning to take place, we are not being consulted, and the policy does not arise bottom-up, and there is a very big disconnect between chapters. And I mean, Constance and Raj are two of the people I am very, very impressed with them. They do quite a lot of work, and the work that Raj does in India is tremendous, and it has its impact, it's calculated, but we don't know what is going on. So, some of the activities, even during the last two weeks, you behave as a chapter. Chapters in India don't exist. Why, I mean, if you're having, if you're talking to the Indian government, why not take the chapters along? And what kind of impression does it convey to the Indian government if you completely ignore chapters? I'm sorry, it's a little strong, but the point relates to the disconnect between chapters and ISOC.
Okay, yeah, thanks for the feedback. You want to address that, or?
No, I think we could leave that for the second part of our discussion on ISOC engagement with its membership. We're still on the topic of security, so I welcome your question, but I think we should wait until the second part.
So, we'll address it in the second part.
This is K, this is K S Raju. Okay. On security side, no, we can have, ISOC chapters can play a major role in implementing what you call some frameworks, which helps on technical side is one framework, which helps the governments and the technical staff, technical companies globally, to follow that one, that is one area. The second thing is, ordinary internet users, especially in India, and all, most of them, they are not educated. I thought this is even ISPs and the service providers, telcos, they won't give anything. We create one standard and help them such that the end-user source can be helped. And the third thing is, all over the world, we have chapters, we have lots of technical people and all. We, all of us, can collaborate together to help the countries, if we have a particular country, request for some solution on cybersecurity and all, and this thing. And all of us can act as a team and solve the solution. These are three points where we can work on the security, because why I'm asking this thing? Recently, we had, aware of three months back, we had a big cyber attack on lots of Indian banks, and it came from within the region. What I have to tell is, one is, I don't want to tell the, tell some countries and all. And the government of India also suppressed, lots of money was lost, but in that case, no, there is no proper policy in overall process within the government, within the policymakers in developing countries. I'm thinking ISOC can play a major role, all these years, we're playing a major role all over the world, and we can push this gap in very less and play a global role. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hiroshi.
Yeah, actually, the global collaborative security action is important, that is always more than one or two years, the ISOC has been recognized. And also, just today, we confirmed that we have the strategic action in the IGF next month, actually, regarding the, you know, communication channel is important between the global and the local communities. And also, we already discussed in this particular issue, IoT security, more than one or two years, though our outreach has not enough, probably, because of the people didn't recognize real, you know, security risk that happened, or recently, that's gonna happen now. So, we have a lot of contact from the government as well as people, how we should do. So, we have some frameworks, some already documented, what should we do? So, it is a good opportunity to send a message to them, who are really concerned now, the issue of the IoT security, I think. So, that's very important to talk with, you know, local chapters as well as the other stakeholders, who are not the native internet industry. So, that's a good opportunity for us, our strategic action, we have already recognized among the ISOC trustee, as well as among you.
Thank you, Hiroshi. Before going, we have another here. Yeah, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. This is Mitch Stoltz. I'm an attorney at the Electronic Frontier Foundation and a member of the San Francisco Bay Area chapter. Speaking about security, there is a threat to the security of internet standards and their implementations, which is pretty serious, which I think this body and others can really take strong steps to address, and that's the threats, threats to security researchers using so-called anti-circumvention laws that cover technological protection measures, or also called DRM. To the extent that internet standards include or envelop technological protection measures, these laws come into play, they exist in many countries. They are intended to protect against copyright infringements, but they're often, and this is well documented, misused to threaten security researchers, to, sometimes goes beyond threats, and there's actual litigation, but to block and chill responsible disclosure. A possible way to do this, and many of you are probably familiar with patent policies adopted by various standards bodies, with the notion that if a participant in the standards process holds a patent in material contributed to a standard, that they agree not assert that patent against users of the standard. A way forward on the technological protection measures and anti-circumvention problem would be to promote and encourage similar policies directed particularly at security research, under which participants in the standards process would agree not to assert anti-circumvention laws, such as Section 1201 of Digital Millennium Copyright Act in the US, or the equivalents in other countries, against security researchers. I understand the board is going to be discussing this tomorrow in closed session, but I wanted to offer, answer your questions about that. I can provide specific examples of abuse, and I wanted to specifically mention that promoting this solution is in no way interfering with national legal systems, legal processes. It's always the case, and this has been the case for many years with regard to patents, that any participant can commit themselves not to abuse their legal rights in a particular way, for the greater good of secure standards and open standards. So, happy to take your questions on this, and I'll offer myself as a resource.
Thank you. Haris. Thank you for that. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Mitch.
Mitch, or Mitch. A couple of points there. There is, in the case of anti-circumvention issues, and I'm quite familiar with this part, because in Singapore, I'm from Singapore, in the Singapore law, you actually are not liable for circumvention, because we encourage the need to be able to figure out what is going wrong, what's going on with a piece of closed proprietary tool. So, we have that as a specific okay, as it were, in the law. So, you know, at some point, it makes some sense to do these kinds of work in Singapore. So, that's a separate conversation there, you know, instead of doing it in the United States or anywhere else, or do it in Singapore. The other one that I wanted to mention is, when you talk about the patent policy issue, there is, I'm not familiar, I'm not sure how familiar you are with something called the Open Invention Network, OIN. So, OIN, in the interest of time, I think I'll just quickly say, OIN is a patent pool, a patent pool of people, or organizations mostly, I think that's currently 100, 150 companies that have actually donated the patents that they have, software patents specifically, to this patent pool. And as members of the OIN, if anybody, any one of the members get, you know, patents asserted against them by others, they can invoke the OIN pool against the person who initially initiated that assault, as it were. So, that's one place that we could probably see. So, there may be some ideas in that, that we can potentially apply for the kind of things that you are looking at doing as well. And even from an IETF perspective, I'm not sure, we need to discuss this further, but that's something I would like you to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. There is one difference, I would say, between the anti-circumvention issue and the patent issue, and that's that the people who are likely to be on the receiving end of these threats are generally going to be different sorts of entities than the ones who are making the threat. So, it's, there's potentially less of a sort of a mutual defense sort of scenario in that way. But nonetheless, if, to make, sort of make conditions or approve of conditions as a prerequisite for participating in open standards, I think would send a very strong message that security research, independent security research should be promoted and not threatened by legal claims.
So, Desiree, I have Walid and Richard in the queue. We need to agree how to follow up on this, and we have the second. So, time management is in your hands.
So, since we have only three and a half minutes, I will...
We can go over a bit, not...
We can, yeah, we can.
Sorry? Okay, so let's say we can go, you know, 10 minutes overtime, but no more than that.
Right, so therefore, thank you. Gonzalo, we will go with Walid first, and then if Richard has his comments, he can do it offline, and we'll go back to the questions in the chatroom.
Thank you, this is Walid. I'd like to emphasize that the board is in total agreement and consensus that we have chapters as a very valuable part of the organization. We believe that our support to chapters will reflect back, and we'd like to emphasize that chapters are truly one, have to be consulted on various issues, and maybe this will tie into the first point. I mean, the engagement part with chapters is truly consensual, everyone agrees on it, but then the question becomes how to do that, and that's where we'd like to develop new ideas. For example, the point about security and the attacks that happened, you may realize or have heard that many of the zombie webcams and DVRs and these devices that are hooked to the internet were jeopardized because of the default password and login that has been used. And so, the idea may not, the solution may not necessarily be technical in this way. We have to reach out through perhaps these chapters to inform the authorities, the businesses, the communities, the consumers within these sectors about this vulnerability, and this cannot happen top-down, it will happen bottom-up. And that's one way through which the internet society can promote and solutions to these problems and prevent it from in the future. So, this is simply an example of what can happen if we have some sort of collaboration. That's why I'd like to emphasize that the direction is more bottom-up, the direction is more encompassing discussions, it's just that the question is, we'd like to have more engagement with them and to find solutions to these problems. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback. I think that also feeds into what Hiroshi was saying about IGF as a platform to engage in addition to working on that. I will now just ask Narrel, who's been patiently waiting in the room. Would you like to speak up, or maybe I'll just read your question out, since I haven't heard back from her? Her question relates to, let me see, yes, there's been a very rich discussion going on in the chatroom, but she was, she was asking something about, okay, got you. Go ahead, Narrel.
Narrel, you are muted. I don't know if locally or Kevin can, okay, no?
Yeah, here I am. Hopefully, that comes through well.
Now, we, here you are, perfect.
It's good to see and hear you all, it's been a while. I hope you've had a great and fruitful meeting. So, the question that I'm putting to everybody for discussion is that I'm currently here, and you know that my day job is in consumer representation, and I'm hearing in many forums at the moment, in regulatory circles and, you know, product consumer protection circles, that the products consumers are buying from their telcos are not fit for service, well, from the ISPs, or internet service providers, these products are not fit for service. We are not being sold internet services that are appropriately secured, that meet a reasonable standard of security from many cases. And so, under Australian consumer law, we should all be getting our money back, and higher levels of regulation are actually being actively contemplated at this point in time. So, if I make it that little bit clearer, in our system, we would go through a process of probably making codes, which could then become mandated codes, which would apply standards such as manners or others. So, what do people think about that, or are the jurisdictions seeing that sort of thing appearing at all?
So, if I may rephrase the question, you are thinking, what should local regulators do about local consumer laws and for IoT devices?
Desiree, Olive, I think wants to address.
Yeah, I think the, if you look at that five Ps agenda, the last point of that was penalize the bad behavior, be transparent about... the bad behavior, be transparent about it and penalize the bad actors. Now, the question is, you know, what level does bad acting begin? What are the actual norms? And I think what is happening in Australia is happening all over the place. The discussions around this are happening on the local level. What we need to make sure is that the right people are in the room, the people who care about the general internet. We need to make sure that consumers are at the table. We need to make sure that producers are at the table and hence find the balance. But this is core of collaborative security, external facing internet values, making sure that at the level where you can address the problem in Australia, consumer base, you actually deal with it. So this sounds like music in my ears, Narelle.
Well, I'm actually also reporting back from the APEC Tel meeting that was recently held, the Asia-Pacific Telecommunity Meeting. So that's a regional meeting of regulators and so forth across Asia-Pacific. And that topic was well and truly discussed there, I'm told.
Yeah, hi, Narelle. I'm, I mean, this topic has come up all over the U.S. as well, as you know, with giant DDoS attacks from hacked cameras. And in fact, Bruce Schneier's blog today, there is a proof of concept of a light bulb virus that they figured it could infect every smart light bulb in Paris, which there are like 50,000. Yeah. And it is quite clear that these devices need some sort of external regulation because they have horrible externalities. I mean, the person who buys the camera doesn't care that he's DDoSing someone and probably can't even tell. And the party that sells it doesn't care either because they're off to do something else. And we, you know, and there's been a lot of discussion, like licensing is a bad idea because as soon as you start licensing devices on any sort of device that's attached to the internet, you kind of have to end up licensing all of them, which would be terrible. So what we've been looking more at is, are there ways to do certification? Like in the U.S., there is an underwriters lab seal that you put on electrical devices, which is voluntary, but if you have the UL seal, that gives you sort of a presumption that your device is safe, you know, and if the house burns down, you don't immediately, you tend to exempt UL listed devices when you're looking for the culprit. And in the same way, I mean, I think we could look for certification for devices that they have sort of minimum, minimum levels of security standard, you know. And when we say minimal, we mean, you know, pretty minimal, like no default passwords and some reasonably, you know, some, they can be updated in a cryptographically secure way, you know, and stuff like that. So I think that's reasonable to look at that. I think I'm basically agreeing with Olaf. This is something that needs to be worked out jointly between the regulators and the industry because, I mean, the regulators, the regulators have to implement it, and the industry has to tell them how to write something that would actually work.
Hi, Narelle Cathy. So if I can just climb on this bandwagon, I think this is a consumer protection issue, and I love that Narelle as a consumer protector is there. What we want to be careful of is that the network regulators all of a sudden step into this morass and we're going to, it's going to cause other, there'll be unintentional consequences of that. And I would direct you to the Bilt Commission report that we were involved in, you'll remember, Narelle. And there's a whole section in there talking about what are market force kinds of approaches that we might start to look at, consumer protection law, product liability, producer liability. These kinds of things are starting to be really spoken about, and this, I think this last attack really brought it to the fore. And we will be ourselves putting out our global internet report in another week or two, where we start to approach some of these issues ourselves.
Yeah, so with that, I think I would like to thank everyone who has contributed to discussion. I think we had a very wide discussion about the threat of internet of things, and we heard a lot of good ways how to approach that, as well as raising the issue of protection of security researchers. So with that, we can continue this probably online. And we should go now to our second topic, which we have partially started, and that is how ISOC engages with its membership. And with that, we do have, I would like Constance Baumler to maybe kick off this discussion to give just an overview, a quick overview of how this works, and if she's not ready since.
You're out here, if that's okay.
Aisha was, yeah, raising her hand earlier, so it might be Aisha.
Yeah, I think that would be right.
To be clear, we have five, I mean, we are already over time, so let's do five minutes. So when I say be concise, I really mean it this time.
I hear you, Gonzalo. Lovely to see all of you.
Excellent.
We'll run through this very quickly. I think the most important thing to set the stage for this discussion is for everybody to, the board has already heard this, but many people may not be aware of the work that we've done this year to really dig in to understand what our community wants in terms of individual membership and how they want to have us communicate with them and engage with them. As Gonzalo and Cheryl mentioned earlier this morning, we also are doing a similar survey with the organizational members, and we'll pull that all together. You can go to the next slide. We'll move through this very quickly. The key is what we have learned from the assessment and research and the internal work is, we have different people in our community who actually want to be engaged with us in different ways. So, next slide, please. The key is to, and you can move on, next one, we're looking at how do we segment our community in a way that we can actually be responsive? And this is a joint across-team effort. I have Fernando Zorro from my team Stakeholder Relations on the line. He's listening to this. We're trying to look at what people really expect from us and what makes them happy to be a part of what we're doing. When we look at this, we're also looking at the donor component, but for the most part, what we're really here to talk about today is, what do people expect us to do? And your comments on how you would like us to engage would be very helpful. You can go to the next slide. We have identified that there are people who support us, there are people who are members who are invested in a different way, and there are others who lead. And part of our goal here is to understand, you know, how we get our messages out on our priority issues and how our community helps us to promote those messages and be active at the local, regional, and global level. So I would just say, why don't we leave it with that? Gonzalo, I don't want to take up too much time, but we have done some homework this year and looking forward to hearing comments about what would be helpful from the membership's perspective.
Thank you, yes. Do we have any questions on this? We have a standing question, so maybe it's better that we start with that. You want to address the question that we had before or? Okay, yeah, so you are first in the queue, but first, let's address the question that was asked first. So the gentleman over there, if you can call his attention.
I'm happy to address that.
Yeah, so just addressing your question as we promised before, sorry for the delay. So you were complaining about the disconnect between the organization and the chapters. Let's, Cathy, address your question.
So I think that I want to repeat what Walid just said, and that is that our dedication commitment to the input from our chapters, I think, is good, it's deepening, it's one that, it's why we're here, it's why we spent time with our chapters here in India. When and where we do things together, I think is part of a collaborative process that we enter in together. So for instance, Sally just talked about having members of the chapter, for instance, at WTSA, and that was a very intentional kind of thing. Sometimes that's the right thing to do. Other times like this time was quite a hello, how are you, we're all at ICN kind of meeting with some of the folks who are part of the government of India. There was no great agenda that we were trying to move forward, and it was quite common that we might do this. As I said, there are other times when we really are having a stakeholder, multi-stakeholder meeting, we're trying to actually get into, dig into hard issues, that of course, we would have our chapters there. So I think this is part of a developing relationship with all of us and between all of us, and I think we work on it. I would say on this particular issue was quite a hospitable thing, I think we did, and it really was not part of, gee, we've got a real big problem we got to sit and wrestle with, that of course, we would have the chapter present.
I want to briefly respond to this, and actually, I've attended over 15 ISOC at ICN meetings, and over the years, the format of ISOC at ICN meetings is probably very carefully modified to minimize discussion among chapters. And so, for example, this time it was only a dinner in the evening, and then some of the recent meetings, it's either a dinner or a formatted, programmed, topic area segregated meeting, and that is not, that is far from a free interaction with chapters and ISOC. And particularly, I want time given to chapters to respond to policy calls. I mean, they should participate and it should come to the different.
So I think to address that, actually, as you know, I mean, we have formed a chapter advisory group, and we are getting already, we already got three requests from them. I think that's like the perfect vehicle for you to basically channel these requests. As a matter of fact, we are already talking about, you know, clarifying your engagement, which is exactly one of the requests we are addressing. So in that sense, it's really perfect, I mean, your question, because it relates directly to one of them. So I suggest you basically, you know, join the mailing list if you are not there, and follow actually how we address the requests we get there, because, I mean, they will get addressed and we are discussing them online.
May I just take one minute to address them? So here's this ISOC at ICN issue. So we've gone all around this, I just want you to know. There's folks who want it to be a, you know, sit down, let's talk things out kind of thing. There are folks who want it to be a social occasion, which you're seeing that happen more because they just want to network. There are people who want to have it as a hybrid. To be fair, you must admit that we had a very special meeting with the five chapters here in India. We sat for two hours with you. We had a far ranging conversation only with you, and then we, of course, had what I thought was a wonderful evening. So I think very much we're trying to be responsive, and we're trying to listen much harder. So thank you, and I hope you would.
Thank you.
Continue to contribute.
Thank you for your question. Walid, you wanted to say something, or it's covered already? Okay, Haris, yeah. Just 30 seconds there. I just wanted to ask Siva. Siva, I got a question for you. What would be in your mind, the, an ideal form of engagement? What would be, what that you think you would love to see happen? And then in your mind, I say, this is exactly what I want to see.
Distinctly, two things. One, when you come up with a policy position, the policy position inputs have to come from chapters. It's not like you're going to release a policy statement and 48 hours before you ask for comments or inform us. The inputs has to come from chapters, and it should be bottom up, and the positions have to arise from chapters, because the legitimacy of ISOC derives from chapters and global members. That is one point. And when it comes to engagement, think of a format which maximizes interaction among chapters, and chapters are free to raise issues, various issues, and not restricted to predetermined topic areas, which restricts interactions. So these are some broad comments, you know. I greatly admire many of the staff members, and so it is just a very broad comment that I'm trying to make. Thank you.
Okay, one more, and then we have to.
This is the last 20 years, you know, I've seen how the ISOC has evolved. Now, 20 years of revolution is over. Now, next 20 years of revolution is there for all of us to reach next 2.4 billion people. I have want to have overall this thing, let us have for one goal, what I'm thinking is not, I don't know, for this one year, we let us have 5,000 ISOC members like that, that is one goal. The second goal is, now, we have supporters, donors, and other people. We'll also add two more groups. One is innovators and as well as the collaborators, where they closely work together from all chapters and create a new innovation to use the mass people, so also help the all ISOC members to have some valuation, so that they can reach the market, that is one thing. And the one more is startups. The startup is entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship division, which also helps, because what can I tell is, I'm looking for, I want to start for a new company and all, I look for 20 to 40 people, very good people. I can, I want to reach all the ISOC chapters all over there, guys, join me. That is the part of the goal. That is second, the entrepreneurship. And third is what you call it is, we will become, I don't want to be frank with you, in globally, the global open human knowledge commerce is the reality, and we all of us should work together, how we closely work with IETF and all of us to make.
Thank you for those comments. They're really good comments. I think with that, we would really need to close this session, but we take this on board and everything, other comments of having newsletter and thanking Aisha for taking us through her triage of what individual members are. Okay, I think the session is now closed.
Yeah, let's, yeah, to close the session, just a few closing remarks. Thanks, everyone, for your basically support and input. As you know, it's, you know, I think the second or the third open forum that we run, so we are still kind of using trial and error to find the best format. This was clearly good to have preset topics because we had a lot more discussion. Also, the length of the session, we had scheduled half an hour, I think we have gone like 45. But anyway, it's very difficult to predict beforehand, so we're going to work also on ways to actually get questions beforehand and also to follow up, because it's clear that we're not going to be able to address in any meaningful way some of the questions that they come up here. So I would take those as the action points that I take out of this meeting. We can discuss if there's more, and we will, of course, be getting feedback from, you know, whoever was there on the chat room. But I think it was a great experiment. Actually, credit goes to Desiree for the, you know, idea of having the predefined topics. I think that worked very well, and well, we'll take it from there. So thanks, everyone, and yeah, the session is adjourned.